This is the October 12th, 2016, the Neshoba Regional School District School Committee meeting. Calling the meeting to order at six o'clock. I've got a, just a quick item, a couple of quick items. One under housekeeping, the Department of Transportation meeting. And then I actually just found out this morning, another one that just came to us on the MASC workshop. But on the Department of Transportation meeting, the town of Bolton, I think one of the selectmen and the selectmen themselves called a meeting of two senior level people at the Department of Transportation. A selectman from each town, the Bolton and Lancaster Town Administrators, 117 Commission Representatives in Bolton, Superintendent Clenchey, myself and Neil Darcy, to talk about safety issues on 117 where the high school is. Because that stretch of land, 117 is owned by the town, DOT isn't going to be able to put fixes in for us. So we have to look at what those opportunities are. And feel free to jump in if I get anything wrong or you want to add something. But because it's a town-owned road, we're not eligible for DOT funding. That means the town takes the lead. So they gave us some suggestions on things that we could be looking at, like building burms or making the signage that it's a school area more prominent, making the lines on the roads more prominent, just to try to get people to slow down. The posted speed limit through that area is 45 miles an hour. And we can't reduce that speed limit. And there's a series of, I think, 10 things that you have to meet in order for the state to reduce that speed limit. And we don't meet all of those 10 things. So their suggestion was that the town commissioned an engineering firm to find out what can be done and a timeline for completion on that. Including one of the things they looked at was the intersection of Green Road and Fort Smith Mill because there's some accidents that occur there. So more to come on that, but I just want to let everybody know that the traffic at the high school is of concern. I don't know that everyone knows it's a 45 mile an hour speed zone. I almost don't want them to know it because when you see a school, you instinctively slow down. But that school zone, in order for it to become an official school zone, it's got to be a K8. So a high school doesn't qualify to, for that school zone speed limit. So I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add.
Well, I think the only thing that I would add is, first of all, we want to thank Don Lo for organizing and orchestrating that with the folks that were there. Somebody brought this up, I think it may have been at Trytown. I can't remember whether it was on air or off air, but I thought it was understanding because I thought the same thing, just standing there, the group of us. And there was a large group of us. It didn't feel safe because of the amount of traffic and the speed that that traffic was going. And it was, you know, I know it was closing in at the end of the day, but it wasn't the end of the day. And it was just the traffic was just, it was just really ridiculous, honestly. So I'm just so appreciative of the fact that we're having some of this discussion and looking at some different alternatives.
Right. So more to come on that as we hear. It may, it may mean a concerted effort among the three towns and the district to get involved with our legislature, legislators. And we'll keep you abreast of what's happening with that. But certainly a worthwhile effort and study. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, maybe do it center. I don't know if there's still things where you can get money for out there, but if you connect a sidewalk to a bike path and you work with the AART or some other bike path people, that will slow them down because then you'll get, you'll get signage where, because bikes, you know, to go across a road like that, there's a crosswalk and it flashes and you have to stop.
So there are a couple of things that came up. One was these beacon lights that just kind of like are strobey almost lights. But another thing that came up was putting in a crosswalk. And the DOT was very direct and firm about not doing that. Because what happens with a crosswalk is the individual walks through the crosswalk thinking pedestrians have the right of way, I have the right of way, they're going to stop. But, but what's happened is there's so many cars that come up and they're going so fast and people aren't necessarily paying attention. And the chief of police even said, you know, they've got rear-end accidents all the time. So you could be asking with a crosswalk situation that you got these adults, kids, whoever, individuals walking across with this false sense of security when there is no sense of security. So that's, we're going to wait and see what they come back with. But in the meantime, I did talk to the town administrator in Bolton. And I had asked him, at a minimum, can you just give us more prominent signage that they're in a school area, even if we can't technically call it a school zone, it's a school area. And the lines on the street, they're looking at, you know, maybe even some of the lines of sight, you know, taking down some of the trees or whatever, and not trees. I don't want people to get nervous about that, but, you know, sculpting things so that it's a little bit more, the visibility factor is there. But it's a real, it's a real concern. So yeah, we'll see what, you know, they can do for low-hanging fruit fixes. And then, you know, the work that they may be doing with an engineering firm might take a little bit longer. But it is on people's radar and it's, it's a concern. But thanks Lynn. Okay. The other housekeeping item, really quick folks, is the MASC workshop. And I know that Alita sent out an email and it looks like, one, two, three, four, five. Lynn, are you able to make a workshop for the MASC? That is roles and responsibilities of the school committee. We've really got to get this done. Glenn Kuchar, who's the Executive Director of the Mass Association of School Committees, is willing to come out and talk with us, May 8th, I mean, November 8th.
Election Day.
Yeah.
Probably an hour and a half at the very most. That's also Election Day, so no excuses for not voting. But if you can make it, we have our forum and thank you all for that. Get that on the books, get it scheduled. And really appreciate Glenn and Dorothy helping us out. Okay. Any citizens' comments tonight? Nope. All right. And Mr. Malice?
The golf team is off to a great start with a seven to four overall record. The team will play in the league championship on Monday. The field hockey team, record of six to one to three, is hosting their annual cancer awareness night in honor of Michelle Parnorth tonight. And the volleyball team, record of nine to four, is hosting Leominster in their ace-out cancer night tonight. The cross-country teams are doing well, but have a bye this week. They will, they will league rival Westboro next week. The boys soccer team came up with two big upset wins last week over Westboro and Tansiqua. The girls soccer team improved to six, three, two. The varsity boys and girls soccer teams are hosting Marlboro tomorrow night in a tough league matchup. Lastly, football improved three to two with a big win over Pittsburgh last week. And the team will travel to Marlboro next, this week. Yesterday, Neshoba welcomed 19 French foreign exchange students who will be hosted by Neshoba students. The freshman class elections will be held on October 21st during activity period. Also on October 21st is Neshoba's homecoming football game. Neshoba's community band has started. It has over 80 people, seven of which are students from Neshoba, and including, and also six faculty members from across the district. Their first concert is a Halloween concert on October 30th. For the, for the performing arts, the band concert is on Tuesday, November 1st, and the chorus concert is on Thursday, November 3rd.
Can I say something? I said this to Nick before and I just want to say this publicly, how much I appreciate having him as our student representative. I said he does a great job here. And, you know, it can be a little unnerving when you come in as a student to an all-adult, you know, community here and where everything that you're saying is being messaged out to three communities. But I think he's so articulate and I think he brings a lot of good questions and a lot of good thinking to the table. So because I just said that to him, I just want to say that to the public as well.
It's really helpful for us to have student perspective on some of the issues that we discuss. So for that reason too, it's really valuable to have you here. And I think we all appreciate the fact that you're actively involved. So thanks so much and appreciate you mentioning that.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. So new business. We've got a couple of guests tonight. This gets to our, please share with us what's happening in the schools. And I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Clenchey to go over the MCAS report out, and InVision report out, which is our new math curriculum, and the district-wide literacy plan. And you've brought, or you've asked to join us, Martina.
Kenyon. And Patty O'Connor, thank you. And if I can just take it, thank you for teeing it up. I appreciate that. The MCAS report out is basically probably what you do every single year where somebody from the Teaching and Learning Unit generally comes before you and says, here's that broad 50,000-foot view of how the students did at the last MCAS administration. So that's what they're going to do right now, give you a bit of a flavor on that. We did try really hard this year to make sure that things across the district were in a nice continuum. And one of those exercises that we're doing is that they are going to go around and meet with every, I've had it as a mandatory meeting with our Teaching and Learning Unit for each of our principals and their designees. So not just and/or, and their designees. They're welcome to bring anyone else to the table that they'd like to at these meetings. And Patty and Martina will basically give them a very specific overview of what's going on in their schools. And I wouldn't mind talking a little bit tonight. And I know that you were talking earlier with me today about how you're looking at it. And I think that it would be really good, I think, for not only just our school committee, but our public at large to know the type of things that you're looking at in those meetings, just from a broad, I guess, just a broad stroke overview. So you're going to talk specifically about MCAS and what you're doing with the principals. And I know that you've had two meetings now, it's very successful meetings. And then we're going to kind of break out, and Martina is going to have a little bit of discussion with regards to our new InVision math program, how that's going, the implementation of it. We know that we'll still have glitches, but we're prepared for that. We're up to the challenge of that, but overwhelmingly it's going well. And then Patty's going to just give you kind of a broad stroke overview with regards to our early literacy plan that we're in the process of developing. And I'd say early process of developing. And you might want to talk about the consultants a little bit and who's working with that. So, and I think too, Martina, it would be interesting for the group to know who's also working on the implementation of the math program. So with all of that, let's start with the MCAS overview and go from there.
Great. Did, did you want us to project the presentation?
That would be, that would be lovely. I think so because then...
So I'll get started while she's editing that up.
That would be great because then our folks at home can see it as well, so.
Great. Well, we started with three guiding questions. And these are the three guiding questions we keep in mind as we look at the data. The first two guiding questions, and I know you have the packet in front of you, so I won't read the questions. But just to let you know there for the public too, that we're focusing on the progress that we've made over time and the percentage of students that achieve proficient and advanced in different categories. And as, as we look at the data, that information is very straightforward and very clear in terms of all the wonderful graphs that the department gives us. But the last guiding question we really spent a lot of time looking at is, what achievement and growth over time, what does it tell us about our curriculum and instruction? And this is where we're really trying to dig down deep. So basically what we've done and what we shared today with the superintendent is to let principals know, we examined the, the particular items where we didn't fare as well as we had hoped. And what we're doing is looking at those items and tying it to a particular standard to better understand which standards maybe we need to do a little bit more work on. So that sets the presentation apart from what we've done in previous years where we're actually looking at the curriculum, looking for places where there may be holes or looking for places to strengthen. So it's a different focus this year. And what I like about it is that the principals have access to the same reports that we have access to. So Martina and I wanted to give them something that they wouldn't see from a surface level. So we're really trying to dig down deep this year with, with the work that we're doing with principals.
And I think coupled with that, if I can just jump in, coupled with that is a notion of also presenting some strategies, possible strategies or possible solutions to help support. But the, you're absolutely right, and I really appreciate how you said it. It's, we're looking at the dovetailing of that curriculum and how it ties in with the assessment. So I think that that's really an important piece. And, and I think it's important that you're having this discussion with the principals. I really do because we see them as the instructional leaders for the buildings.
Absolutely. So the, the next slide is a look at the accountability data and...
Yes.
I'm turning that over to Martina.
Okay. So we, you all have, a lot of you have seen these already, so we're going to do kind of a high-level overview. And if you have more specific questions, we're happy to answer them. So when we look at this, which is the report out for the whole district, the one thing we want to note is how proud we are that we're meeting the various targets that we are. However, one of the very valuable pieces that we see is also where we still need to continue working. And as a district, I think we've always had a focus on making sure we're meeting the needs of all students. And I think this highlights that we want to continue that focus until we really see that, you know, the data shows that our desires are met.
Do you want us to take questions after the presentation?
I would go through the whole presentation first and then come back for questions after. Otherwise, I think we might get bogged down.
No.
Just suggesting.
Okay. The, the next slide is a focus on the achievement at the district level. And it looks at achievement over time, starting with 2013. And as you can see, it's pretty steady in terms of proficiency or areas of weakness. Very steady. But the good news is if you look down on the very bottom row, it says median SGP. And what that means is that's the growth percentile. And the state has determined that 40 and below is not adequate growth. And as you can see, we're in the 50s as a district. And when you look at 2013 to 2016, we have jumped six percentage points. So we're, we're moving in the right direction even though to look at the data, it looks pretty straight-lined. So it, it doesn't look like it has changed much.
And this is the related graphic for math. And again, I wanted to highlight that our growth data again is, shows very strong in the high 50s. The other thing that I wanted to acknowledge is that one great trend that we're seeing is that our percent of advanced students overall in the district has steadily been increasing. And we're very, very proud of the work that our teachers have been doing all over. But in particular, see that it's being represented in that group as well.
And I think, Martina, if I can just jump into, and I know that we said this too, I know we did an interview with one newspaper. It escapes me right now which newspaper. We were stressing how proud we are of our staff and students for the, for these types of scores. Because these are very, very strong scores. Not just the, the growth, you know, but overwhelmingly, these are good, good scores.
The science graphic unfortunately doesn't show the same trend because that report isn't available. But what we do see is compared to the state, we're doing very, very well. And I think that's something to be proud of. The other thing I wanted to note is although it doesn't show up here, again, our percent of advanced students has been increasing pretty steadily over the last couple of years.
Okay. There's a lot of data on this particular slide. So what I want to do is bring your attention to the column on the right-hand side, the second column to the right. And that shows the growth overall. So as I mentioned, 40% is the cutoff. And even with the subgroups, we're above the 40%. So there's a lot to celebrate on that slide.
Trying to learn how to use the remote here. And then similarly, when we do move to the math slide, again, we have very, very strong math growth overall at 58 SGP. The other thing to note, however, in, I think, all of our trends is again, the achievement gap between some of our subgroup students and the general population. So I think, again, this is another important way to see that we still have work that we need to do as a district. And similarly, if we look at the science, I mean, that, that kind of relationship is the same. As a whole district, we're really, really proud of the work that our teachers, our staff and our students do. However, there's still work to be done for some of the subgroups.
Okay. So now we're up to, yeah. The... The one after would be two after that. Okay. We're, we moved...
Well, well...
Oh, so that's, okay. All right. Okay, there we go. All right. So this again is another slide on growth. And it presents it in a different way. And this particular slide is on the students with disability versus the aggregate. And as you can see, the aggregate for growth from grades three through 10 is at 60%, whereas the disabilities is at 43%. So this gives us, so although the growth is still good with the disability status, we, that's a place we still need to do some work. And comparable is the math. It's almost verbatim.
And I think the other interesting feature in both of those slides is the top, which is the sort of general larger population. We really want to see our students in the dark green area. That represents high growth. And we don't see that in our, some of our subgroups as is illustrated there. So what we really want to see happening over time is that those two spectrums kind of look the same. And particularly are deeper in the green and that our lighter green area over time is, is less and less. So this is a little bit of a shift. Obviously, it connects to last year. However, in addition to the work we just want to do generally with our students, we also have some upcoming changes that we're anticipating with the state's adoption of next-generation MCAS assessments. So those are highlighted here. In particular, we have a team who's working to develop some supports for teachers and students around the computer-based testing that we're expecting to begin in some of our grade levels this year. We think that the math program that I'll talk a little bit about later is also going to help us with that. Because part of the benefit of that is that there's a lot of online assessment that can be part of it, if, you know, as we decide to migrate that in. And then there are some other changes that we've highlighted here in terms of the types of questions and the sort of overall structure of the assessments specifically for math and ELA. And those go along with the computer-based tests, but also the next-generation MCAS. So those are specific to those subject areas and not expected to be changing for science at this time.
And here are the dates for the MCAS for next spring. As you can see, the high school will be having the long comp. But at the grades three through eight, the writing will be a part of the test, so it won't be separate. So that's, that's another shift from what has happened in previous years. Number two. Okay. Next steps. Okay. So as the superintendent pointed out, we're meeting with principals and talking about the data and how it relates to curriculum. We are also, so we're looking at our, our current models, our current practices and tweaking as we gain new information. We're also working with the teachers around the changes regarding the computer-related testing. So I, I'm sure at a later date, you'll get a more current update on that as well.
And I think I just wanted to highlight again that we're very excited about the sort of new way we're trying to look at data specifically. And I'm sorry, I was setting up while she was talking. And if I repeat, I apologize. But, you know, because some of, one of the things that's been missing in the standard reports that we get from the state is the longitudinal data around curriculum. So we've spent some time just sort of compiling and looking at trends in that way so that we can see, if, if we look in one year in isolation, numbers look bad or good, but it's kind of in isolation. We want to see how are we doing over time? Because that's really what's going to tell us. You know, are the changes that we're making helping us or are they not helping us? And where else do we need to focus? So that alone, I think, has allowed us to have some meaningful conversations with principals so far. And then they bring the context of, these are things we've tried within our school. Oh, look, it's working or not. Let's see how we can translate that either to other grade levels or other schools. And so we look forward to learning that element of this too because we're not aware of every little thing that's happening. But we want to be able to kind of share out across the district if we're finding practices that are effective for some of our students.
Right. So we're really wanting to replicate the best practices approach. Give the example that you did today when we were talking about, you know, you can see the standards and there were five areas that all came from the same sort of standard. That was, that was just a classic example.
So in meeting with one principal, we looked at data from third grade. And we tallied where they fell down. And what I did was I related it to a particular standard. And what we found is that there were five, so five different times, there was a definite pattern that we had fallen down in one area of the reading standards called craft and structure. So that's the kind of pattern that will help us make changes within the curriculum. And it was very eye-opening for me as well as the principal. So now we can, now that we know what the situation is, we can address it.
And just to add to that, I think, another opportunity that we've taken in being able to deep dive into the assessment questions is sometimes you see that there's a weakness with a particular area and you read it and you think one thing. But then when you look at the questions, you say, actually, that's not the issue. There's something else that might not come out if you're just doing a cursory look. And that's something that, because we're able to do this across the district, you know, we're able to share with everybody as a learning in a way that they might not have time to do and that we want to do for many reasons. So I think that's another benefit that we're seeing so far in the conversations that we're able to have with the various schools.
And one other thing I'd like to point out too is that we, we, we need to cross-reference this data with the other assessments that we're using. Because many times, kids are assessed on, might have two questions for one standard. So if they miss it, is it really that they don't understand the standard? So it's forcing us to look at other data as well and really cross-reference.
Great. I, I think that, let's just leave it at that and open it up for questions from the members.
So, so I think we're going to be able to have a little bit more and I think this, these topics warrant a little bit more attention. I don't want to stifle the conversation. But before I take one at a time questions from the school committee, thank you for the way that you put the presentation together. And thank you for trusting us to review the document and not spoon-feeding us. We can read. We want to hear your expertise. So if you could make sure that they become poster children for the way that we want to... Because we can do the reading, we just need, we need your expertise and we need to ask you the questions. And then if anybody who's interested in a more robust report or a full report, where can they find that? Is there more data or is this the data?
Oh, there, there are many more reports that you can look at similar data in a different lens. So the reports are made public, but some of the reports can only be accessed through the security portal. But if, if you have specific questions around any of this, we're, we're happy to get you the information.
So what you showed us is what you aggregated from the data.
It is, but there are some that are accessible through the DESE website. There's a tool called the DART, D-A-R-T, Accountability. And if you, that is something that anybody here without even our input could dig into. That report with all the lines across it that I spoke to early on is sort of the overview of that. And then a lot of those links are active that people can kind of dig into and see from year to year what the trends are. So even without, we're like... So even without, we're, like Patty said, we're happy to, but even without that, there's a lot that's accessible just to the general public.
And although DART is an area to look at, I mean, it is just, it is just one way to look at, at the data. I would encourage you actually go, if you go on to the left-hand side, go down to, you know, where it's got MCAS and it will have the student growth percentile, it will have absolutely everything, all the graphs. A lot of the things that you're seeing there are all there, it's all public information.
So, so here's what I'm gonna ask and you can, we can figure this out and you're like, uh-oh, what's she gonna ask? Here it comes. I wanna make it easy for parents to be able to see the data for the district. So if you could decide what it, what are those reports? And what, what do we want them to see so they get an overview of how well we are doing and where, you know, where there are areas? Could you put those links somewhere?
You know, we, what, I'm just thinking as you're talking, talking this through and asking the question, we probably could do something in terms of almost like a step-by-step direction and post it online and just say, here's exactly, you know, go to this, go to the assessment, go to this, go to that, and literally pinpoint and/or, we could also cut and paste some of those links and just put it there so they can go on.
You know what, that's the easiest thing to do is if you're, you know, if they want information on this, click this link. If you wanna look at this, click.
It's just so much.
No, but you guys filter down.
Yeah, we could do that.
Now, once you're on the site, if, you know, if I'm a parent that's interested, I'm gonna zoom around anyway, right?
Yeah, it's very, it's one of the few user-friendly components to that website.
Good that they picked that.
Yeah.
So, alright, questions from the school committee, who's got questions? I've got some. Anybody?
I just have a funny one. Oh, go ahead.
Um, just something that was not mentioned here, but I noticed as a parent, there was a PARK score on what, what we received. Now, what is that all about? Is, is PARK, so what?
That's a great question. So while our district took the MCAS, some of the questions were taken from the PARK database, a question, of test questions. So the state kinda separated those out. Really what that meant was if their style was different, some of the changes that I alluded to on that slide with the changes, the types of questions, that's where those came from. So in general, I would comment that they're higher level questions, they're very thought-provoking, thinking questions. And so I was excited to see them separated out because I think that, again, that helped us identify some areas of strength and weakness, but that's what that means. It's just PARK-style questions.
But in the future, is that what we're expecting?
Yeah.
To look, okay, right.
I mean, there's still gonna be a mix, just like in the past. Our next generation assessment is a mix of questions from the two databases that exist.
Uh, Jennifer?
So just purely out of curiosity, there doesn't seem to be any SGP, median SGP for the African-American community. Is that a reason? And it's not listed, I mean, there's certainly students, I mean, there's listed, there's percentages. Are they just not enough in the, okay?
Right, so the, the state requires, and I, I'm gonna say, I actually don't know the minimum number, but exactly, if you don't see the data in the aggregate, it's because the number is so low that they don't feel that, like, it's valid to represent it as an average or a median.
That's exactly right.
And the other question was, you mentioned long comp is going away up to grade eight, but it's still gonna be in the grade ten, is that going forward? Or are they phasing it out in grade ten as well?
This coming spring, it's scheduled, if you go to the slide that tells you the test administration dates,
Right.
at the very top, it says ELA long comp for grade ten.
So is the assumption is it's gonna be?
At least for this spring, right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So there, as, because the MCAS at high school relates to the competency determination for graduation, there's a lot more that has to be in place in order to change it. And there hasn't been conversation about how that's gonna change it, just that it's going to be in the future, if at all.
Okay, so, but are, are grade K through eight, you know, well, three through eight, are they gonna be ready for a long comp that they haven't taken if it comes, they hit grade ten?
You can speak to this, but it's embedded in the assessment.
Okay, so it's part of?
It's just not a separate, right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I love what you're saying 'cause it's more than we used to get. And I love that you're looking at ways to improve by looking at the data. But I'm just wondering, is, when we talk about the progress, does it come up later? Is that built into the goals of what they're doing? I mean, how do you, where the measure of results for what they're doing? So if it's doing well, it continues. So is that written somewhere, how they're progressing?
No.
Well, are you assuming that, God bless you, but are you assuming that these two ladies are responsible for these scores? 'Cause I don't, oh, okay, okay.
No, I think she's just asking, is there some way that we can measure if this year, the way that we're approaching it this year is going to be effective? And my first reaction is just, we'll know as we continue to watch the MCAS scores. And I think like you had said earlier, you know, the notion, you know, I think it was in one of Lancaster schools that they knew that the teachers were doing something different. And they could clearly see as this rise of the MCAS scores that exactly what they were doing was hitting it out of the park. So that was an exciting moment for everyone, you know? So we're really looking for those best practices, period.
And I'm kinda looking at it from outside 'cause we're, we're supposed to monitor. So I'm just wondering how we do that? How do we monitor that this is happening? I know that through reports, but is there, have we talked about how it's going to look as far as a process or anything?
Monitor, okay, talk some more.
I'm not really sure how, it's... This is different, it's, it's, what we're doing is different. I mean, where you're taking the information and, I mean, we were talked at before and now you're saying, okay, we're, we're gonna take the information, we're gonna look at it and we're gonna share it. I love it. But is there a, a way to find out that it's being monitored, it's, it's working and it's gonna continue? You know, I just wanna move.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not getting, and I don't know, Lynn, alright, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try this, okay? And then, and then we'll spend a couple minutes and if I still don't get it, you and I are gonna meet tomorrow and talk. So are you asking, how do we know if the programs that are gonna be put in place are effective? Or you're saying, how are we monitoring? Well, we're monitoring based on the results that are coming back from the scores. So I'm not sure, because this score, these scores represent everything that goes on in the schools, right? It's the curriculum and the books and the curriculum online and the, and the social stuff, it's, it's a lot. So I'm, I'm not sure, I understand the question.
Are, are you asking if, if the process that they're starting to, like, to change, you know, going to the principals and then if that, how that process is being?
No, it's more for us because we, for the past years, okay? We have not been able to influence or maintain or monitor any, not that that's our job, but I know we have to monitor.
Right.
That something is happening. When we asked, it was really hard because we would just get the same information back again. I'm not really sure how to frame it or where it's at.
So I think if you want information on any type of, this type of information, MCAS results, what are we doing? I think it goes right to the superintendent. We asked the question.
Well, I think we, we wanna be careful again about process, right?
Well, no, we'll go, no, through the school, through the school committee, yeah.
Because otherwise, I mean, I could just.
No, 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 I don't mean everybody call the superintendent and ask your questions, but let's figure out what it is we wanna know as a group and then, and then we'll get that information.
I think that's the best.
I think if you're saying you like this new process, you like the new report out, you like the collaboration, I think everybody would say, here, here, and let's keep going.
Yeah.
Yeah. Kathy?
The data analysis you do with MCAS, isn't that the same process that the teachers use if they are looking at common assessments together? So let's take math for example in an end chapter test. I would, I'm assuming that there are data teams set up among the teachers that they can look at results and talk about, you know, what worked or didn't work and implications for instruction. So it's like you do it, it's a, it's a process you use for any type of assessment. You're doing it with the MCAS because that's the, that's the fifty thousand-foot view. But my assumption would be that at the school, that the principal is, has an expectation that there are teacher teams that look at assessment. To get to Lynn's point, that's how, the, 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 the MCAS is, is one test once a year.
That's correct.
And there's other stuff that goes on.
Yeah.
That, that allows us to monitor progress. Though maybe it's easier at the elementary level when you have the, you know, reading programs and, and math programs and whatnot. But, so it's, it's about the process.
Yeah, yes and, yes and no, and I would agree with you, it is about process. But I, I think that this is starting to go down to a different road from my lens right now that we are just, in fact, these are the, the two people that are also helping with the assessment piece, period. And one of the conversations, without going into any detail tonight, 'cause tonight's not the avenue for it, but is that very question is, how are we, and dare I say, are we using that data? We've been collecting all kinds of data, we've been doing all the assessments, but the rich and hard conversations are just starting to happen right now. Would that be a fair assertion?
Yeah. But I, I wanted to acknowledge that we do have a data culture within our schools that's informal often, that the teachers as teams, I mean, we are so lucky to have a lot of collaborative time in particular in our elementary schools that the teachers use for many reasons. But one of those is to look at assessment data to, to inform instruction on an informal level.
Okay, I'm gonna pull this back a little bit. Mark, you have a question?
Um, yes, can you describe what student growth percentile means in terms of how, what the composition of that statistic is and how it's arrived at?
I think I can.
Okay. It's honestly, and I'll tee that up just quickly by saying, it's not easy. This is not easy and, and.
So give a distant picture if you can, just so that it has some, something for me to hang a conception on.
I will try and then two people will translate for it. So basically, for every student in the district who takes an assessment, that student receives a score in a given year. And then the next year, and then that student has the same score as a collection of students across the state. The next year, all those students take thus another assessment and they probably earn different scores. They're sort of organized in order of the score and then assigned a percentile based on how they did related to their sort of collective group that was created the year before when they took the assessment. And so that translates to, like, a student with an SGP of fifty percent got a score that's kinda in the middle in their group of kids that, that took the assessment.
You did a really good job of explaining that. And if, if you go online again, if you go onto the DESE website and take a look and you'll see the dot graphs there that, that show all of that kind of thing. And they will have their own definition on DESE too, that you can take a look at that. But that was a very good way to explain it. But it, it is very difficult to, to whittle down to.
In, in a nutshell, they're being compared to the previous year with like students.
That's right.
So that's a very simplistic view, but it can be, it, it, there's lots and lots of information on the, on the website about it.
Do you have another question?
When you say with like students, do you mean students that got the same percentile?
The same score.
Right, the previous year.
The same score in the previous year. So they're collected together into a group and then.
Okay, so does anybody else have any questions? 'Cause we got a lot to get through and I wanna make sure that we give these ladies enough time. And if not, I have a question for you. And I noticed on, Martina, you said, you said, subgroups, some of the subgroups need more work. So I need to hear more about that. I don't know if that's where you're gonna take us into the next discussion or if you can tell us what, which subgroups you believe we need more work in and what, if any, plans are in place to start to address the needs. And then, because I'm even looking at just, I don't even know pages these are, but the district achievement level ELA and the district achievement level math. And I'm seeing that while the, the, the scores look good against the state and the median SGP looks good. And I know, and frankly, in a difficult year, two thousand sixteen was a difficult year, so kudos to you guys and all the teachers and staff across the district for the results here. But I'm seeing like even in the ELA, we're consistently at three percent warning and failure. And I don't even wanna go down that proficient is proficient but not for our kids, you know? I don't even wanna go down that road. But even in, you know, in the math, you know, you know, we're, we were kinda like holding steady at five percent warning and failing and now we're at six percent. So what are we doing in order to address those kids? And then I noticed in here that there was a statistic that said for those higher achieving kids that we need to do a little more, so what are we doing there? And maybe these questions are too big to answer in this forum, but as a parent, those would be the questions that I would want answered.
So I'll start out by acknowledging that there's a lot there and there are a lot of variables for any population, but in particular, our, our population of students with disabilities, I think, across the state probably nationally or even worldwide, that's the, the group that needs the most attention and is kinda the most struggling group in many ways. It's the most individualized in terms of the types of needs that are, that students have. And it's therefore the toughest to move sometimes, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. What we are doing in talking to principals is kind of looking at instructional practices around these students and these conversations are just beginning, so I can't speak at this time to specific changes that are being made, but perhaps in the future. But we are looking at that, knowing that this is obviously still the group that we wanna continue to focus on in terms of instructional practice in the general classroom, in terms of sort of extra supports that these students are receiving outside of the classroom. And finding areas of strength, I mean, with, even though that's an aggregates data point, there, we've found already pockets where things are working. So again, taking that and kind of sharing it across the district and either doing something slightly different or finding a way to make it work in other schools.
So are you looking to formalize some of the things that are working?
At least to share them as practices. Every school is different, but certainly to share, share out things that are working in different, in various schools and in an effort to see whether that either is in place already or could work in a different way in another school.
And, 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 you know, with due respect, you know, the MCAS is one measurement. And it's not necessarily what, I mean, it's an indicator, but it's, it doesn't necessarily dictate
Right.
the success of the students.
Right.
Absolutely, in the district. So anyway, I'll get off of that and let you folks start talking about the Envision Report out, 'cause I'm really interested in that.
So again, you, everybody has the slides in front of them, so I'm not going to read what's here, but I just wanted to, again, just share out that teachers K to five. Yes, we have to sign in again, I guess. Let's just try.
You want me to do something?
We're good.
We're good.
Okay, you can try pushing the buttons until it moves. But so, K to five, we are implementing a new math program called Envision Math. As you all know, last year we piloted two and it was felt overall that this one would kind of lead us to where we wanted to go in terms of moving our district forward. And in particular, what we're excited about with this program is the fact that it's problem-solving oriented. What that means is that students on the outset of a lesson work with and sort of, in a supported way, struggle with a problem that helps them kind of for themselves, make connections, learn from their peers, and then be able to communicate about the math that they're learning. So we're really excited about that shift. We're also excited about the different and various resources that the program provides for our teachers and our students and our families. So those are two major, I guess, differences in the program that we're now implementing. With that, however, comes, comes some challenges, in particular with the shift in this teaching model. Because the program we used before, I would say was a lot more structured and, not that this is unstructured, but it was structured in like telling teachers exactly what to say. Whereas this, because we're letting kids talk more, is a lot more oriented around teachers as facilitators instead of teachers saying this exact thing to kids and then kids not getting the opportunity maybe to process as much. So the other challenge we've found has been, a great thing about the program is its technology. There are quirks always associated with technology and we're finding those as we start to implement this program. But we're trying to support our teachers, students and families in a lot of these elements through formal professional development. But we're trying to support our teachers, students and families in a lot of these, um, elements through formal professional development for our teacher. Teachers our whole year is focused on math and in particular, supporting this program implementation. Um, we've also connected with a, a, a group of districts who collaborate together around the use of this program and are learning from one another. And we're benefiting because we're the later adopters in the group. So a lot of them have been using the program for at least a year or more, and so we're learning a lot from them about, you know, what worked and what didn't. Um, and then we are very lucky to, um, have building-based math specialists who have really stepped up, um, in the, in terms of leadership within their buildings and being another resource for our teachers, um, in, in the implementation of this program. And that's all I have.
So, we've been using this program for how long?
So this is the first year that all teachers are using it. Last year as part of the pilot, half of the teachers in the district used it. And it's been so great to, um, hear from them in terms of what difference they're seeing in their kids this year. And actually even more interesting, in some cases, kids used the program last year and the teacher didn't. So seeing what the kids are able to kind of show their teachers this year because they are sort of more used to the structure has been just wonderful. And I'm hearing positive things about that, so.
So I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna go to something that Lynn talked about earlier. How are we measuring the success of this pro- and I don't think the word is right, that's not the right word, it's not success. How are we measuring the incremental gains that we might be making that this is affording, because affording us? Because I think, I think that the comments that you make here are encouraging. And, you know, that's one of the questions, how are the teachers receiving it? Um, but, but how do we know that it's working and taking us either in a different direction? Kind of like move into the next lane and moving forward or?
I, I, I really want to be cautious with, with this, to be honest with you. I, I appreciate the line of thinking, but it really makes me a little bit nervous. Because this is, this is a piloted program, this is our first full year of implementation. As you clearly said, and I want to repeat, we expect there to be glitches. Um, she also had alluded, Martina had alluded earlier to the fact that, I think it was Nicole's question on Park, right? Um, I just want to do a good double check, who is the publisher of, uh, Envision? Pearson. And who was the brains behind Park?
Pearson.
Pearson. So there's a nice, that was never in the mix for discussion purposes. Envision was, was picked up because it was decided by those teachers who piloted last year that this was a program that they wanted to use. But a, a side effect or a spill-off, if you, if you will, is because Pearson is behind both of these, you're going to see a lot of the Park-type thinking coming through with this. And this is going to be substantially different than our MCAS. So it makes me nervous, even as we look to next year and the first full implementation of the next generation MCAS. I don't know if we're going to see the types of scores that we've seen for this year, for example. And it makes me, it, it, I just want to throw the caution flag out there because it is a very, very different way of looking at a assessment. When you look at next generation MCAS or old MCAS and Park. So for multiple reasons, I am really nervous about saying anything or moving anything forward that says this is how we're going to measure, because it is going to be such a different year for us. So I, I'll just put that out there unless you think it's something different.
But I gotta tell you, I still want to know how we know whether it's working or, I mean, why do we do it? I don't, I, I just gonna put that out there, I still want to know, how's it working? And I would want, I'm not being critical and I'm not criticizing, but I would still want to understand, you know, and maybe this is something we build into the survey this year, you know, in, in that portion of it. But I would still want to understand it, but Kathy?
Well, without thinking about the Park or the MCAS.
Right.
There are assessments that come with the program and with each unit.
Oh, that's correct.
And so, how, and this is what I was kind of talking about before, it's a common assessment.
Yeah.
So teachers can compare how kids are doing, it's evidence of what has been learned. And so that's, to me, I mean, am I oversimplifying?
That's the answer then.
Well, I, I might be oversimplifying, but I don't want to get hung up on the Park or the MCAS.
Right, I would agree.
I, I would be more hung up in making sure that if there are, is pre-testing that needs to be done, that that gets done. That the post-testing is done and if people look at the data and talk about what it means, how kids are learning, how they're teaching and have those conversations.
Right.
And to me, that's what is more important.
Yeah.
But it's important that we know what's going on, we don't need the nitty gritty data.
No, we, but I think to your point, it's, that's the question is, how are we doing with it? If there are assessments, I don't care about, kind of makes me uncomfortable that, that this program is hand in hand with Park, but I don't even want to go there.
I didn't say that. I, I didn't say that.
It's the same.
Same publisher.
It's the same publisher.
Same publisher, but that is a, that, that is a bonus, because I do think that how it's being presented, I, and to your point, and you said this earlier and I don't know if it was picked up about the rigor, because that's a key piece. And the fact is, I, uh, from my perspective, I think the Envision presents that rigor in a different way than the older series. But that's going to come with a different way of thinking. But I, I totally agree with you, I, I think there, the, the common assessments, getting back to our discussion earlier, I think those are, those are critical to this. It, we ju- and you said, uh, as well, Chairman Ramaz, we don't want to just look at MCAS or the next generation MCAS. That's only one.
This isn't MCAS, right? This, I'm not looking at, this is our math curriculum, so I'm not looking at, I, I don't want you to say our MCAS scores are good. I'm not even thinking MCAS, I'm thinking, we have a brand-new curriculum here, a really fresh, innovative, hopefully can apply to all different populations of students curriculum here. And you're saying yes, and all I'm saying is, so how do we know what we're getting from it? And I like what Kathy said, there are assessments, and that's all I want to know. Like, we can't just say, we're doing this new curriculum, everything's great, we're moving on, because we just want us, nobody's gonna ask you for the detail. We just want to know high level. So I'm assuming, once we do this year, we come back the next year, you guys are in front of us and you say, this is where we were, this is where we are, these are the new things they're learning as a result of this type of curriculum. That's what I'm looking for, right? And I think that's what you alluded to earlier. Is that true?
Yes.
And we're collecting input from teachers too, and even in terms of the order in which they're taught. And, um, you know, with the math specialists, we've talked about the end of the year, kind of going back and saying, okay, um, are there any recommendations that we have in terms of just overall the district changes that we want to make? Um, so we definitely are collecting that information, but it, at this point, it is more conversational. And there are uni- topic assessments that, um, every teacher will give, will give a lot of great information, um, uh, for, for that. And I think the bene- the benefit for Park is, um, mostly in the technology, also the style of questions. But mostly in the preparedness of our kids just to do online, um, as part of their experience with this.
All right. It'll just be a more similar platform, which will, which will be helpful to our kids.
And we're, again, informal, information about what's working, but from the teachers who piloted, a lot of them shared just the, the depth of conversation that the kids could have about math, even just coming into this year, who used the program last year was just very rewarding in terms of their sort of overall understanding and ability to conduct conversations about a problem that they're working with. And to me, that's a sign in terms of where math is going, that at least at, at the start, it's working, it's working on the basic level.
All right. So, um, why don't we jump into the literacy piece, and thank you very much.
And there it is, okay. Um, when I came and presented to you last year, I indicated that there were some great things going on in each of the elementary schools around literacy. However, uh, some schools were going down a different path and using different language. So in meeting with the principals, we are all in agreement that we want to pull everyone together and we want to use the same kinds of practices, we want to use the same kind of language with our kids. So as a result of these conversations, we have agreed that we need a elementary district literacy plan. And it's a, a big undertaking, but we have been working with some very talented consultants last year. And we're going to continue to work with them this year. And what we're doing is we're having equal representation from each of the three elementary schools. We want, um, it's important that the principals are at these planning meetings, that there's classroom teachers at the different levels, that there's special education and ESL representation and literacy specialists, um, just a few from each. I don't want you to think we're pulling, um, half the staff, but, but just a few from each level to, to have a fair representation. And, um, we've identified four days when we will come together to do this work. So we're, we're very excited about it because it's really going to give us the opportunity to, to look at what we're currently doing, um, cross-reference it with what we know is best, best practice and really start to come to consensus as an elementary, uh, team. So, um, I'm very excited and as we continue to do the work, I'm happy to come and report on our progress.
Great. Thank you, thank you so much. All right, any questions? You're saying, no more questions.
We love the questions.
Thank you so much for coming and sharing the work. I've got a question from Kathy.
This, this isn't for you, you're off the hook. No, I think this is great, and I think to understand about the elementary curriculum and to see how you're bringing, um, the principals into the discussion as educational leaders, uh, to lead the schools. Um, and this is not for tonight, but for a future meeting. It would be interesting, informative, to, to have the same process applied to understand the curriculum at the middle school and what is going on and not that it's all, I'm not looking for, even if, if there are plans in place, to know what, um, people are looking at. Um, because I, 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 I think that people often focus on elementary and high school and then stuff happens in the middle, but nobody is really sure. I'm really interested in articulation, so that the things that are happening, the literacy and the math, any of the stuff that's happening at the, um, elementary level, doesn't fall off a cliff when the kids go to, to, to middle school. So in the future, it'd be good to see what the plans are. I don't expect perfection or anything, but, but I want to know that it's being talked about and thought about and what work is being done to connect, to connect the systems.
I love that idea.
Did you want to speak at all to that?
Uh, well, I am currently working with all three levels. And I feel I have a good sense of what's going on in each of the levels. And one middle school is, um, taking the lead with a particular, um, philosophy. And, um, the, it's really best practice. And the high school is so excited to hear the work that the middle school is doing. And they're starting to reach out to one another. So I, I think we're moving in the right direction. And, and I agree about having a, a solid plan for the middle school, and I, I really think we're moving in that direction.
Right. Our high school, uh, ELA teachers are also getting together for an off-site, uh, shortly. And we're, uh, Perry and I were just orchestrating some of that, uh, work today too. So I think, you know, curriculum instruction is really almost the, the core of a school district. And you really want to have that going in the right direction. And I feel right now that we're doing some really nice positive stuff forward in that area.
And I'll be joining the high school for their off-site, so.
That's great, because I would love to see, uh, just gonna put a plug in for both folks, I'm sorry, but I gotta do it. But because we have a K eight, the transition to the high school is that much more dif- well, it's different than it is for the other towns. Not that the, not that everybody's not important, everybody is, it's just unique in the K through eight grades. Okay, I'm done. Thank you so much for coming and really appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot Superintendent Clancy for your guidance there. Um, okay, we're gonna move through, actually, we're not gonna move through this one quickly. I'm gonna turn it over to Kathy to speak to the superintendent goals and evaluation process.
Okay, um, I'd like to call everyone's attention to the materials packet, and there are three documents in that packet. The superintendent's evaluation process, the superintendent's annual plan and the superintendent's goals. So the superintendent's evaluation process is, those of you who were here last year might remember it. And that, um, we were able to take a twenty-four page document of, from the DESE that outlines the evaluation process for, uh, the superintendent and administrators and sort of condense it to what is hopefully, um, an understandable version of it. So there's the annual five-step cycle of continuous improvement. It starts with self-assessment, and this is the same cycle that teachers and other administrators in the district use, um, as they enter the evaluation cycle, and it starts with a self-assessment, and I'll talk about that more in a minute. And then there's an analysis based on the self-assessment, goal-setting and plan development, implementation of the plan, mid-cycle goals review, and then the summative evaluation. So last year was kind of a funny year for us, we sort of started with the, um, with, uh, sort of a, 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 a goal-setting and ended with summatives, so we're gonna try to go through the whole thing this year. So for the superintendent's self-assessment, in the, um, packet under superintendent's goals, it's the third thing, you'll see parts of the rubric, it looks like this. And what, um, Brooke did was look at the, um, uh, the complete superintendent's evaluation rubric and identify those areas that, that she sees herself paying, um, special attention to this year. Um, the last meeting, we went over her entry plan, there is a lot of stuff, a lot of goals. And so they'll touch on some of, of these. And so in doing her self-assessment, these were the things that emerged for her, as things she wants us, um, to pay attention to. And then she's linked her goals to. Um, and then, um, the superintendent identifies, this is number two, under step one, identifies professional practice and student learning goals. And then, um, number three, the student drafts two to four district improvement goals. Well, if you look at the superintendent's annual plan, it's the second document, you will see Brooke's learning goals, I'm gonna stop in a second and let her speak to her goals, her professional practice goal. And, um, we decided the profession, the, the personnel subcommittee decided that in light of everything that Brooke is taking on, that one district improvement goal that is sort of all-encompassing would be more than enough for this year. So, um, Brooke created a draft at our last, um, PSC meeting. We approved the draft of her goals and are recommending that the school committee, um, um, accept them after she talks to them. But just to go through the, the process, um, the next time that, after we accept the goals, um, we will have a mid-cycle review, probably end of January, beginning of February. Now, between now and then, or I'm, we haven't really talked about the timing yet. Um, in light of all the questions, um, from last year when we were doing the evaluation for CURT, I think it would be a good idea to have a workshop with MASC to talk, so we can address the questions that we have about actually writing it and addressing the, um, the different standards and elements and indicators. So I, I, we weren't able to do that last year, we'll do it this year, so that should help. So all that being said, I'll let Brooke speak to her, um, annual plan.
Sure, thank you. So the student learning goal, and, and none of this should become as a surprise to any of you, because you've heard me say it over and over again. So now it's just articulated in, in an annual plan, is to develop and implement a plan to support the transition, um, that's, of the fourth and eighth grade students district-wide to the computer-based assessment. And you heard us talking about it, and I've actually made a note here to, to have the ad hoc representation, uh, that's working on this. Come and present to you in the next couple, maybe in the next couple of weeks or so, so that they can tell you exactly what's happening in the district, across the district. Um, and again, the teaching and learning unit is, uh, supporting that with a director of technology, so they can come and speak to that. So in terms of the student learning goal, that's kind of an obvious one. The, the second, the professional practice goal, um, again, I've had some discussion, uh, with regards to that as well. That's establishing appropriate evaluation procedures for principals and assistant principals, uh, based on the DESE model, um, for edival. And we've wrapped up, uh, for all intents and purposes, the assistant principals component now, so we finished that up this week. And now we're focusing on the, the principals, so that's kind of where we're at in that particular process as well. Uh, the last is, um, a district improvement goal, and again, this should come as no surprise to anyone either. Uh, by June, uh, first two thousand seventeen, organize and procure copies of basic contracts, specific. By June 1st, 2017, organize and procure copies of basic contracts specific to school district, appropriate school and district inspections, and list appropriate to each center. And each center, I often refer to them as the human resources center, the sped center, the facility center, you know, and, and even my, my own in the superintendent's offices as well. And just the, the notion of mapping out key necessary information, categorizing it appropriately. Yes, we've got, somebody asked me today about electronic files and yes, we do have some electronic files, but we also need real hard copy files as well. You know, Jeff, when Jeff was here, conference, he was talking about the fact that we were pulling together all the files for all of our vehicles. You know, with the titles in each file and we know exactly where everything is, where we're at for inspections, all of that kind of thing. So this should be, this should be no surprise to anyone, any of these key goals. So I'm not sure if you have, it's kind of distilled down. And quite frankly, even though this is a key component, the fact is that entry plan is really what I'm working off of. These are where the bulk of the energy is going to be focused, but quite frankly, that entry plan really laid out the work that's being done right now. So I'm not sure if you have any other questions.
Questions? So you're basically helping to build or shore up a foundation?
I think that that's a really good way of looking at it. You're absolutely right and I think shoring up is probably a good word. In some cases, doing a little bit of rebuilding too.
Yeah.
You know, so, but I feel comfortable with, you know, where, where we're, I'm even seeing us kind of now, in terms of that last school especially. You know, you can start to see it all coming together as we're pulling in all kinds of documentation and it feels good to see it starting to come together.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And we'll get a report. We'll, we'll nail down the date soon so that we can expect a mid-year assessment from Brooke. Let's just turn our report out and then like I said, we'll set up a workshop with MASC to help us with the, the mechanics of putting everything together. Because I know it was a lot and we had a lot of questions last year, so.
The other thing you'll note too, like when I go to do this superintendent's report tonight, I always, I'm referring consistently back to the standards.
Yeah.
Whether it's one, two, three, or four. So you'll, you'll notice that even again tonight.
Okay, so, ooh, you've got a question.
Yes, more as for organizational, for various people who are not sort of classic principals, say leaders of a center or perhaps even curriculum people, how are they categorized in this, this area?
That's a great, great question. I would tell you, like I have not put that on here as a goal, but you, you would need to know that I am working on all of those. And, but that's a, that's a terrific question. In fact, we had discussion on that even earlier today, the teaching and learning unit and myself. But to give you a flavor, I've downloaded in several, for example, Business Manager. You know, the business, what, what does that look like in terms of, you know, different evals that are out there right now? Because we just really don't have one specific to Neshoba Regional District. So we, we're looking at that right across the board for the other centers as well. That's a great question.
So will you have those?
We're working on those too, so that, my hope is that everybody knows exactly what they're doing, including for example, like Donna Lindstrom's position. You know, she and I've had some early discussion on that. So I, I completely agree in that the notion is that we can put this still in place for this current year.
Well, yeah, because if you don't know what the expectation is of the role, then how do you know if you're successful?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Good question, Mark. Okay. Kathy, are you looking for a vote?
Yes, I think we have to vote to approve the superintendent's annual plan. Can I have a motion?
I move that school committee approve the superintendent's annual plan as drafted and presented to us.
And a second?
Those technically the goals? I mean, those are...
Those are the, those are the three goals as per the DESE.
As per the annual plan, for the second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other conversation questions, comments? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, thank you Kathy for leading the effort. All right, the Bolton Green Community application. I'll give it a shot if you want.
And then I'll fill in anything I can fill in.
Well, then why don't you do it?
I think you'll do a much better job. I'll, I'll start to tee it up and then, you know, we, we were approached by the, the town of Bolton because they're making application to, to want to be a green community. And we, we don't have a lot to do with that, but I think you're going to, you'll do a nice job of teeing this up. The piece that we are involved with directly is taking a look at energy use and consumption within our schools. And so that happened, I believe on Thursday last week, I believe they came in and Pat shepherded them throughout and orchestrated.
School-specific to Bolton. Lancaster did this a number of years ago, the same process.
Right, because it's a town initiative.
Yeah, it's the town buildings that are...
Right, and so the school district is really just a little piece of this that says that we support them doing this and that we'll, we'll do whatever we can to help the process.
Think that's it? So it's just an FYI?
And it's just for Bolton?
Because I think that...
You are a green community as a community, not as a district, so the town has to apply, but because the district buildings or town buildings, when we did it, we had to get the same assessment done from, for the buildings in Lancaster.
It's very common.
There was a very positive consequence though if Bolton goes forward with it, because then all three towns will be a green community and district is able to more fully participate in this whole energy grant process for the state. And this is a very positive thing that Bolton is doing this.
Right, awesome. Okay.
Does it, does it get confusing because we're at different counties and different towns?
Mainly it's just different towns that, that the, it's hard for the state to deal with a district that's across towns that participate and don't participate in terms of grant-making or participating in green communities.
Okay. Thank you very much. Hale Keyboard Donation, Superintendent Clancy.
Right, thank you. So I think you saw in your packet that we've had, and, and actually I'll just read it so that you can see. We just need you, you to accept tonight this donation. So I'll just read what, what Principal King has written. Says, "Mr. Richard Perry of Bolton is a regular substitute here at Hale. Unfortunately, his wife Priscilla, who was an avid keyboard player, passed away on July 2nd. In honor of her memory, Mr. Perry has donated her keyboard, case and amplifier to the Hale School Music Room. This equipment is a great addition to our robust music program. It's in excellent shape and is estimated to be valued at $800. I would appreciate the approval of the school committee to take permanent possession of this equipment in memory of Mrs. Perry." Very, very special.
It would be lovely if a Stowe representative made a motion.
That we accept the donation in the name of Priscilla Perry to the Hale, of, of a keyboard, to the Hale Music Room.
My second, the motion.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Perry. That's a, that's a huge thing for him to...
Yes, it's very generous and it's a lovely gesture.
Absolutely.
We certainly appreciate that. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Perry. Okay, school committee norms. I think Susan, you're up for the next couple.
Yes, so we voted to bring the norms to the committee for approval. There is an amendment to, to the norms. There's a bullet that was not on the, the document that's in the packet that I can read to you, so if you're comfortable moving forward voting on it with the amended, with, with the change, then I, I will...
Huh? Which one is it under?
Um, it's norms and operating protocols.
No, no, no. Which, which of the norms?
Oh, sorry. It's under effective collaboration with each other. Yeah.
All right.
Which is a little redundant.
So this is a little bit different, so the red is not what's added, the black is what's added.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Sort of. Even, even the red is a little bit different from what, what had existed before. So the, the last bullet we'll read, and this is based off of your request that we review the Article 24 of the, the bylaws.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's sort of tied in with that.
Okay.
All subcommittees will act as a unit with representatives seeking additional information through creed-upon channels as a result of subcommittee discussion and at its request. So basically just saying that, you know, a sub, subcommittee would need to agree that they would want more information and then go through creed-upon channels to get that information through the whoever it is.
I think that totally supports the bylaws.
Okay, do we need to vote the amendment?
You need to vote the whole document.
So we're open, we don't, you guys amended it in your...
Yes.
All right, then I will vote to approve the norms.
You will, you mean you'll make a move?
I mean, I will vote. I will move to agree to, to the norms, the school committee norms.
As amended.
As amended by the policy subcommittee.
Okay, so let's do that. So...
I will move that we approve the school committee norms as amended by the school policy, uh, policy subcommittee.
Thank you. And the second is Kathy, any questions?
Thank you.
All those in favor? You guys did an awesome job on this. Thank you so much. They are so much, they're so rich. Thank you so much. So here's the deal, folks. All this work that went into this, this is what, I'm, you know what? I'm going to get a big, a big poster and I will take care of it.
Put it right there.
We're going to put it right there. We need to live by these guys. We did, we've done such a great job. Let's just keep going so we can get a lot of work done.
It's going to be the first page of our handbook when we make it.
It will be the first page of our manual.
Manual.
Thank you so much. All right. Susan, you're up again.
And, and then the next thing we sort of overlooked, this is just a matter of procedure, we need to take a vote that mask, we need to give mask permission to review our policy manual. So we didn't vote specifically on that last time.
I will move that we allow masks to approve your policy manual.
I will second.
And the second is Kathy, any questions? There's no additional fee. This is part of the previous, okay? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you again, Susan. Awesome work, policy. Okay, we are, wow, we are now down to, I should have put more on the agenda.
Stop.
Finance Subcommittee, Mr. Dossie isn't here, so Mark, would you do the honor?
Oh, I wasn't prepared.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jen. Does anybody want to tell us what's happening in finance? Pat, do you want to tell us?
Well, we met and we discussed kind of the process of starting to ask for reports and there were, Neil put together some reports that we might be interested in. We discussed making sure we start with reports that are easy to produce. So you're not, we're not requesting things that are going to take, be time-consuming and then we find out are useless. So things that can be produced on a, on a really kind of efficient, quick basis so we can evaluate how they, how we like the information given, whether it's enough, what we need beyond that. But I think we're trying to figure out what is most effective for Pat to provide us and the administration to provide us without becoming onerous for them and so they can do their job.
And what's useful.
And what's, well, yes, it's that's what we can read, what we can evaluate.
Thank you so much for that because I think, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to be respectful with everything that you're doing to build or shore up and Pat, especially in your center. But at the same time, we need to find what's that appropriate line of depth of information. And when it comes to finance, you know, when Glenn Koetzer comes and talks to us, he's going to say there, there is no, you know, definition of what you can't and can't and can't see. I think the question is the additional work. So that's where, that's where we got to get to, to be respectful of, you know, you're already going to be doing some changes. You've already changed some of the processes anyway, which is probably going to enable some of these reports anyway. So that's the good news, but...
Well, and the new accounting for food services should help us significantly generate things quickly and efficiently and consistent with what the information actually Pat has, which in previous years and incarnations you couldn't, they didn't coincide, so it was very hard to even evaluate. So I think as things go along, we're going to find out what's useful. But, and I, you know, I think we're very understanding and respectful. I hope Pat feels the way that, you know, if it's not working and it's too hard, we can, we can adjust.
Well, then why do we want the data too? I think that's the first piece is why do you want, whatever area we're asking for the report from, from, from the administration, what are we going to do with the data? What does, what value does it add to the work that we do?
Right. So you have to, we have to evaluate value added for us versus value taken away if it's onerous to produce. So it's a, you know, it's a balancing act. And I think it's going to be a full year of us evaluating things. I don't think it's not going to be something we're going to come up with instantaneously. I think as things evolve, we're going to learn more, but...
And we don't necessarily, I mean, what we are looking, I mean, this is going to be a, this is not a one-time ask, right? So this is, this year, these are the things we really want and need in order to do our jobs appropriately. And the next year, evaluate it. Maybe those are already set up and it's not, you know, a big deal. Maybe we didn't need some of the things we thought we did, but we really need that. So it's got to be an annual review.
And as things change and as the school district develops, it's going to evolve going forward, so.
Perfect.
And I think it's fair to say that the finance committee itself wants particular things that may not be appropriate to the whole school committee and may require an excess amount of...
But I, but I want to caution you on that.
So that's a conversation that we are trying to figure out how to...
Yeah, because what the finance committee wants is an offshoot of what the school committee should have. So that's one of the dangers, the, the things I'm worried about is, you know, you guys are doing such intense work in each one of your subcommittees, but you have to keep in mind that it's really important that whatever data you are getting and assimilating and processing needs to make its way to the school committee. Otherwise, you've got two or three people that have a certain amount of data that informs decisions that may be made down the road that may not be directly applicable right now. So just caution everybody as you're looking at, what are these reports that you want? They're not for this center. They're not for this subcommittee. They're for the broader school committee. So I just, just keep that in mind. All right. Anything else on finance? Nope. Okay. Personnel.
Okay, we have been working with Superintendent Clancy on the goals and now we can run other things. At our last meeting, we had a discussion about the needs for some type of leadership for teaching and learning and Brooke's going to come back to us with a recommendation and some itemized needs for that center. And then we are meeting on Monday to talk about goals and to look at our meeting schedule.
Okay. And policy?
We started to discuss the residency policy tonight and worked on our subcommittee goals, which are very close to completion. And then we also talked more about the DV annual budget and decided to pass that off to finance committee to look at, just to see if there's any input they, they would like to have, if there's anything that's, that, that they want to see in the policy that's not already there. And then Neil, as a chair of finance, can report back to the policy subcommittee on, and then make a decision.
So you've kicked it back to us?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just for the shenanigans.
Yes, just, yeah, we're pretty, we're pretty, pretty satisfied with what we have.
Okay.
I just want to make sure the entire community is...
So, and finance is not meeting on the 20th, just so you know.
No, you didn't get it.
No, when do we get?
When do you get, well, finance will look at it and then kick it back to us and then...
I love this. Dorothy would be so proud if she saw us working together like this. Great. Love that. Thank you. Thank you so much. Nicole, CPAC.
CPAC will be having its next meeting a week from tonight at Florence Sawyer. And the topic will be making sense of your child's neuropsychological evaluation, which any of us who've been through a neuropsych knows that you need...
Help.
Help understanding what are, they do have a clinical psychologist, Dr. Joseph Muldover coming to, to facilitate that particular meeting. And then after that, I would recommend, not after that, but at any time, going to the CPAC Facebook page. I think you can find it under Neshoba CPAC. And they've been very good about updating their activities there and in addition to including things that are going around, around in the surrounding community. It's a really good resource.
Great. I want to go check the Facebook page out.
You should.
Is Isabel still?
She is, yes.
That's awesome.
Yes.
Thank you Isabel Wells. Okay, nothing from... Okay, nothing from tech, nothing from emergency response. I just wanna make sure on the emergency response, Jen.
I missed the meeting, but I have the minutes.
Oh, there was a meeting.
There was, I was gonna say, there was a meeting, there's a bit of an update on that, but I wouldn't be prepared to give it tonight, but. Yeah, no, the minutes, I've been, I've been in contact with Donna and I'm ready for the next meeting, we're all set, but.
I think that they're just about ready to come forward with some recommendations to the school committee, period.
Right.
Oh, good.
So I think, yeah, I think they've been working really hard.
They're waiting for some things, according to the minutes.
Some good things?
Good things.
We like good things.
Well, there's some recommendations, so, but I think it's not yet been formalized.
Awesome, great. And I don't know where tech stands, have they been meeting?
It hasn't been a tech meeting yet, I don't think it's later in the month perhaps.
Okay, all right. I have nothing on collective bargaining yet, although there's an A. Where should be? But, but collective bargaining, we are, we've gotta start thinking about it.
Oh, it's the ten twenty-four day?
The ten twenty-four day is just a discussion, an organizational meeting for that.
Do you have the time for that?
To the group. No, but I will get that to you, likely in the evening at six o'clock.
That would be good, that would be good, thank you.
Let me make a quick note. Audit advisory.
It appears we are coalescing around a likely meeting date, not yet set, but seems like October twenty-fifth is a likely time you can actually get in the same room. I think that's a Tuesday, almost two weeks from now. So all of the members have been appointed and conversations about the agenda are started. So I think we will then begin to have conversations about.
I thought there was a meeting.
We were going to have a meeting, but we didn't, we had conflicts for this week. There was intent for this week and nothing did occur.
So at that meeting, you'll select the chair? Okay.
Yeah.
And then, so this year, in order for us, when do we need to have the decision made? So let's back it out, so when do we need to have the decision made on who the auditor will be, whether it's the existing one or a new one? Pat, do you know?
I would speculate we ought to have somebody known by April.
In order to conduct the FY seventeen audit, so.
Earlier would be better, later would be acceptable, but I think that's a good aim, a good place to aim for.
So the good news is we get early, we get started, not early, but we got started at the right time this year.
I think if we can get an RFP out by January first or maybe February first, that gives ample time for both to get a good RFP together as well as have internally conversations about what should be in the RFP and then have time enough to evaluate and perhaps even have to send it out again if we don't like the results. So that's my informal, non-committee, it could be the committee has other points to be.
I just wrote down February one, you're sending out your RFPs. Because we don't wanna miss this year.
Pat, help with that, who's responsible for doing the RFP?
It's this committee.
They have to create the RFP.
So they would create the RFP, they would synthesize all the data, right? And then make a recommendation, correct?
Yes, and I think the motion, the original motion was that committee in collaboration with the administration would create the RFP.
I would think that there needs to be collaboration with administration on this.
Okay, just to be clear.
So we'll be definitely drawing upon the advice and wisdom.
Of Ms. Pat Maroney.
And our superintendent.
Same did process as we did before.
Excellent. As long as we can just do it this year, because I know last year there was so much going on, we didn't have time and we were off contract. And one of the things you said is you want the contracts, and we do too, we wanna be on contract with a really well-regarded rate, so competitive rate, so that's good. Mark, thanks a lot, appreciate that. Superintendent's report.
Just a couple of quick things, MCAS, you were updated tonight on where we're at. The scores have gone home to the parents of Teaching and Learning Unit. You heard them talk tonight about looking at data very differently, and I think that that's going really, really well.
It's a general question about MCAS, I'm never sure where to ask this. With the change that they're going to put in place, one would expect there would be potential drops in scores and as blips and things, is the state taking that into account with all of the standards and the meeting schools and the, you know, the numbers we get? I assume if you're all of a sudden gonna give kids more of the PARC questions, that they're not, you know, they haven't started them, or they just started them, you know?
Yeah.
One would expect there would be a drop, at least in advanced to proficient, needs improvement. Is there an expectation from the state level of that, so that you are going forward with all of the, you know, I know that a lot of funding and a lot of, I don't wanna say funding, but your levels are based on how you're improving. So is there, is there some recognition from the state that there might be some drops that are not necessarily assessment, you know, the assessment had been continuously.
Based on performance of the students versus the switch in.
So my first reaction, excuse me, is yes, my first reaction is yes. And I wanna be clear too, like, we talk about PARC, but keep in mind that PARC really, again, was a platform, more of a platform and definite leading towards greater rigor, right? So, but keep in mind that the state has its own unit that just looks after the creation of the next generation MCAS. So it's, so although we can talk about it being a blending of MCAS and a blending of the PARC platform and such and the rigor and such, there is this unit inside of the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that is just committed to this, the creation of this next generation MCAS. Very, very bright people, man that, I mean, they're incredible people to deal with. Now, there's another totally separate unit that just looks after the very thing that you're talking about in terms of the scores, in terms of how those scores are navigated and arrived at. And the very thing that you're talking about, this unit just looks after that kind of thing. I would tell you in all sincerity and all honesty, I did not know that these units existed as they do before I worked for the department, but I know these individuals well and I'm very comfortable with the fact that they will take care of the situation. And this, for purposes of just general discussion, this kind of discussion happened frequently, particularly with Deputy Commissioner Jeff Wilson, who's very, very, very acutely aware of and attuned to the fact that this could happen in terms of drops, so, and scores.
Okay, and as far as the 10th graders who are just gonna be, you know, they're kind of the, you know, guinea pigs, is there some accommodation to be made so that more are failing? Because we all know how tra- dramatically, traumatic that can be, I mean, is that? Because you're gonna be comparing apples and oranges in some way, so, yes?
Yeah, that discussion also happened, to be honest with you. And so, yes, I would say there was very honest and very frank discussion that I was involved in that was across the table on all of this.
I just, you know, having an eighth grader or 10th grader coming up, you start thinking about it, you go, you know, are they gonna, are they, you know, gonna be penalized for being this guinea pig group? So no, this is all, okay.
No, I think, I think that they'll be taken care of. But, but my only caution earlier tonight was just to say, like, just keep in mind that I would certainly expect, no matter what we do, that there will be that potential for a drop. And I just wanna be cautious that we measure appropriately from our lens around this table. And I would also agree with, you know, I think Kathy did a nice job earlier tonight talking about other data that's out there that we take in and take a look at. But I also wanna put that caveat on their saying, but we're also taking a look at how we're using that data right now. Just, I seem to recall when MCAS first came out, and there was another test before that, but the first couple, three years, it was a way for districts, I mean, you've got information about students, but it really was a way for districts to evaluate their curriculum, to see how aligned it was and to recalibrate. And then over time, that happened and the scores went up. I would imagine. That's exactly right. That it would be a similar process. But the high stakes testing didn't hit until 2003 and the MCAS, I think, was five years old by then, so. But you're absolutely right, and that's exactly how we're looking at the data right now.
But it's still gonna be a requirement for graduation, it's still gonna be a requirement for graduation of your kids, so.
Some other quick things, Emerson-Boiler project, I'd mentioned last time that, you know, that this, our town was taking the lead, Bolton was taking the lead, which we're thrilled with. And so they opened up bids on Wednesday and the project was assigned to Royal Steam and they were on site today, so I know that it's still cold in the building tonight, I know some of you are wearing your jackets. Yes, that's what it's like right now, all day long, but we're thrilled that the work is being done right now. I have the traffic calling meeting on my agenda, but you did a great job with that. Water safety, we've gotten our results back, you'll recall that Selectman Frame had brought that up and we were scheduled for October, but we brought it in a little sooner and the results are back. The water's absolutely fine for drinking, so we're good with that. But we haven't received, now Jeff will be back tomorrow, so he might have gotten an email from the state on this just affirming the preliminary results, so we've not sent any paperwork over to the town yet. We won't until the state gives a stamp of approval. So that's where that sits at. The tri-town meeting, we, yeah, we didn't bring up the tri-town meeting. I thought it was a great meeting the other night, and I think that we had great representation there from here and from our selectmen, and I thought it was a great climate in the room. They asked terrific questions and I thought that the conversation was very rich. So I felt it was a great tri-town meeting, that was, but that.
Plus, I think Lancaster, every time we have a tri-town in Lancaster, there's just a tone of the meeting that's very collaborative and open and research and, you know, so thank you, town of Lancaster.
It's great when everybody shows up. I remember tri-towns, and I was the only one who represented from Lancaster.
Well, and you know what, to that end, I, you know, kudos to Susan and Kathy, were you there? You weren't there. Susan and Jennifer and Lynn and.
And Mark wasn't there.
I was there! But, you know, and Neil was there. I mean, we are now finding that, you know, I think it says a lot to the towns and we care enough to show up and have conversations with them. So encourage everybody to continue to go to those tri-towns when you're able to do it. You learn a lot, and it's great for continuity.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I've already talked briefly tonight about the assessment review, but the Teaching and Learning Unit has started that discussion and we're looking at Dibbles, Fonda's Cornell, all of the great, you know, aims web, all of those things, and I think some really, really good discussion is happening around that right now and very frank and honest conversations, so that's going well. Educator evaluation, I mentioned again, I was gonna mention tonight, the very question that you asked me about even our central office, we're taking a look at all of that right now. But I'm thrilled that we've gotten to where we have with our assistant principals, that's a good feeling. And now we just need to wrap up the principal component. So I think that we're making good headway with that area, so that's my report for tonight.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is correspondence. You know, we gotta talk about this, because generally if we have correspondence, we send it to Alita and Alita will put on, in the packet, you know, the town, who the individual was that sent the correspondence and a quick synopsis of what it is. And then if somebody wants that information, they can contact the central office or they can contact Alita and receive it. So because we're doing it this way, I contacted MASC to see how are other districts handling correspondence, because it doesn't seem that we really have anything to talk about anymore since we have a process of identifying and making public that correspondence. So, and what I've learned, and I've talked to a couple other districts, is they don't have it on their agenda at all. So there may be the opportunity to just remove it from the agenda. And then if we have something of particular note that we want to talk about, that could be a meeting by meeting issue. And maybe it's a big enough topic that we wanna add it as an agenda item, so I wanna know what you guys think about that. I don't think this is a big deal, but I think this is something, I just wanna hear what your thoughts are. It just seems like any correspondence, no, and if we do, it's in the packet. And the question would be making certain that if there was something that came up that was a large-scale discussion, that we would add that to the agenda. So, anybody have any thoughts? Anybody care?
I have a comment. Sometimes individuals get correspondence that maybe doesn't rise to distributing to the whole committee or even make it to the office, but is a topic useful for a member to mention if someone in their town has concern about X or Y, that kind of thing, so it's.
Except that it is a public.
Sure, and, but it, so it could be useful just to have it as a blank item in case, just allowing for those opportunities such as they may be.
Yeah.
No, I'm familiar with districts where I have been in where correspondence has been on the agenda. And usually there's no correspondence, or it's a letter, like a donation or something like that. It's part of the packet, people can review it. So it has been on the agenda.
Okay.
It seems like, you know, in our willingness to be more transparent, to just have it there, available to anybody who wants to be, you know, known, I, I'm all for keeping it just for that particular reason, to make it known that if you're going to write to a school committee member, there's, you know, you are going to be heard and not just by that school committee member, but by the larger committee and maybe then by contacting the central office, by the larger community.
Got it, that makes sense. So, but then that means that, you know, when you do get correspondence, it is public.
So is the expectation we bring all correspondence to the school committee?
Well, technically, the correspondence is public, right?
No, I'm good with it being public. I have gotten correspondence and I forwarded it to the appropriate principal or the, you know, you know, if it's a question about a bus stop or something, there's no point in bringing it to the school committee. And, you know, so if you forward it, it is a public document, it's on my public email, but I'm not gonna bring it to the school committee, 'cause it's been handled and it's an issue that's.
No, but it is a public document, so even if, if it's not discussed, which they don't all need to be discussed, I mean, Brian Boyle from the Bolton Advisory might send me an email saying, geez, can we meet on X date? I wanna understand more about this and I wanna share something. And it's like, well, I'm not gonna bring that to you and it's not gonna be on the agenda, but it is a public document. So I would say use your best judgment, but if it's a quick thing that you can answer.
And handle, I mean, I think the.
If it's school committee related.
Right.
Right.
Versus school building, yeah, yeah.
As opposed to something specific to, that can be handled, okay. All right, so I'm good with that, I just don't want the expectation that everything somebody sends me is gonna be.
No, no.
Chilling up here.
No, I don't think that's it, but I think what I'm hearing is leave it on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. Consent agenda. How are the warrants, everybody good?
I'm just seven, yeah.
Jennifer?
I'm just seven.
Yeah, I do too, so we will do that. And the meeting minutes for September twenty-eighth, is everybody good with that?
Yep.
Excellent. You did a great job.
Lynn did a good job.
Anytime you want to.
You can't go away at a school committee meeting. All right, so I have some items for next agenda, but I need to know if you folks, and Susan, don't let me leave without signing that document, so we can get that mailed off. So remember, next, the next meeting is the twenty-sixth. It's your first cut of your agreed-upon school committee goals, subcommittee goals rather, for recommendation to the school committee, right?
Yeah.
And your first cut of your subcommittee reports request. And the feasibility study discussion. Mark, we talked about that and what is the feasibility study and what's the expense and what does it mean to the taxpayer, which I think is wonderful, thank you for that. I've got something for you to share with you that Lynn actually triggered, so we have Lynn to thank. And then the high school broadcast journalism and deckup presentation. So Superintendent Clancy has set up a presentation for some of the high school students to come in. And then the much anticipated class size policy.
I can't make the next meeting. I have her teacher's comments.
Oh, all right. So who's gonna be taking the lead on that, Nicole? I think we need to make sure in the agenda that we, that we give enough time for this. I don't think it's gonna be a quick discussion.
It could be very quick and it could not be quick at all.
So maybe we should just err on the side of giving it ten minutes. Anybody have anything else they wanna add to the agenda for next week? I cannot, pardon? Two weeks, I'm so sorry. Yeah, we're not doing that again, two weeks. It's 10 minutes of eight.
I'm gonna return.
Just wanna say, it's a first. Do I have a second to the, um, motion?
Second.
Kathy, thank you, all those in favor? Um, unanimous, thank you all, appreciate your time.